All right, good afternoon, everybody. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Wednesday, January 22, 2025. The time is 3 o'clock. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the President of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the city website and the Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin will be arriving shortly and enter into the closed session. Councilmember Bodnar.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade.
Here.
Councilmember Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Mulock.
Here.
City District Attorney Gillan Schwartz.
Here.
City Manager Dietrich.
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner is present and upstairs, and CFO Kevin Haney.
Here.
We also have present is our Labor Council Michael Watson. Council, we have one resolution on the special meeting agenda at 6501, 2025. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12. This is to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for the following units: GWU Upper Management, UAW Middle Management, PBA Local 59 for the superior officers, CWA White Collar, CWA Blue Collar, and the IAFF Local 3495 Firefighters.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar.
Yes.
Mayor Mulock.
Yes.
Public Portion Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go into closed session.
Time is 3:03.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are coming out of a closed session which we're going to take no action on. We need to adjourn that special meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn that?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. With that, we will open up our reorganization meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Wednesday, January 22, 2025. The time is now seven past 4:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Presse-Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the City website and City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mulock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Jichik?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
And Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
All right, Mayor, we have the invocation first.
First, we have the invocation. Father Alan Leonard from the Church of the Advent. Would you please join us? Thank you very much.
Almighty God, ruler of all people, send down a condo to hold office in this city of Cape May, inspiring wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people, guide them in their deliberations, that all that they do may be in accordance with your gracious will and for the welfare of all the residents of Cape May. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Move on to the oaths.
Some oath of office here, beginning with yours, Mayor.
The Honorable Judge Batten, if you would please join us at the podium. Is this where you have his clerk?
If you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, Justine, would you like to hold the Bible?
It's your event. It should be as you wish.
Judge, okay. So you are going to raise your right hand and hold the left hand on the Bible if you'd like. I could hold a microphone for one of the kiddos, Cam.
Where should I go?
You gotta hold it for the judge here.
Go to his left side so he can hold the hand on the Bible.
James, you gotta hold it for the judge right here.
You gotta hold it up so you can hear your dad, okay? Get a little closer.
Get a little closer. Step right in here.
All right.
And hold the mic a little bit closer to your dad's chin. Dad's chin. Real set. Please repeat after me. I Zachary Mulock?
I Zachary Mulock.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And the state of New Jersey?
And the state of New Jersey?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established?
In the United States?
In the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All of the duties?
All of the duties?
Of a Cape May City Mayor?
Of a Cape May City Mayor?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
And that I will not use my office?
And that I will not use my office?
To grant preferential treatment?
To grant preferential treatment?
Nor to seek personal gain?
Nor to seek personal gain?
Favor?
Favor?
Or advantage?
Or advantage?
Not available to the general public?
Not available to the general public?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next up, we have Councilmember Bodnar here.
Yes, next we have the oath of office administered to Councilmember Steve Bodnar by the Honorable Judge Batten.
Yes, so my wife is here, my mom is here, my sister here. Mom, can you come up to Mary Beck?
Yeah.
I know you wanted to. Someone else can get a picture. My wife.
So you're gonna move on to his left side then? He's gonna put his left hand on the Bible and he's gonna raise his right hand and repeat after the judge.
Real set? Please repeat after me. I Stephen Bodnar?
I Stephen Bodnar.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey?
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established?
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All the duties?
All the duties?
Of a Cape May City Council Member at large?
Of a Cape May City Council Member at large?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
And that I will not use my office?
And I will not use my office?
To grant preferential treatment?
To grant preferential treatment?
Nor to seek personal gain?
Nor to seek personal gain?
Favor?
Favor?
Or advantage?
Or advantage?
Not available to the general public?
Not available to the general public?
So help me God?
So help me God?
Congratulations.
Congrats, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So if I could just make a couple of remarks. I just want to, I want to, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve on Cape May City Council, and I want to thank the people who supported me in the election, and I thank you for trusting me to have, with the responsibility of serving on Cape May City Council. Cape May is such a unique and special city with our history, with our architecture, but most importantly, with the character and fabric of the people of Cape May. And it is humbling to be able to sit in this position and serve on the City Council. I would say I was inspired in part to run for City Council by coming to meetings and watching the people who I'm sitting up here with, Mayor Mulock, other members of City Council, former Councilman Mike Yeager, who, Mike, I appreciate you being here tonight, and, and watching, watching them work and devote themselves to Cape May and do what is best for Cape May. And what I hope to do is add that value to the city and to council as well, and serve in that same capacity, and bring my talents just as each of them are bringing their talents to Cape May. I would be completely remiss without acknowledging my wife and my family being here tonight, my wife Ellen, my partner, and I appreciate all of your support and your tolerance for me. And I want to also acknowledge my, my family who's always supportive of me, but my mom is here tonight as well. My mom's birthday was yesterday, and the one thing that she wanted for her birthday was to be here for the ceremony tonight. So I'm very grateful for my sister Mary Beth, for bringing her down. I'm glad they were all able to be here. And I would add, my mom and Mary Beth also are homeowners in Cape May as well. They don't vote down here, but they, but they, but they also have homes in Cape May as well. So we're devoted to the city. So I'm ready to get to work, and thank you very much. I appreciate you all.
And finally, Mayor, we have the oath for the Deputy Mayor.
All right. So we have the Deputy Mayor Maureen McDade being sworn in by the Honorable Judge Batten again. And Judge, thank you again for being here. Mary Francis, thank you for coming. And of course, Judge Batten is a resident of Cape May and, and a very highly respected and honored former judge, and we, we thank you so much for being here.
Our pleasure. We're thrilled to, thrilled to help.
Thank you.
Okay, you hold that.
Please repeat after me. I Maureen McDade?
I Maureen McDade.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey?
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established?
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All of the duties?
All of the duties.
Of Deputy Mayor?
Of Deputy Mayor.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office?
And that I will not use my office?
To grant preferential treatment?
To grant preferential treatment?
Nor seek personal gain?
Nor seek personal gain?
Favor?
Favor?
Or advantage?
Or advantage.
Not available to the general public?
Not available to the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Madam Deputy Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you.
Judge, again, thank you very much.
I just want to thank everyone, and in particular, my fellow councilmembers, for giving me the honor of serving as Deputy Mayor for the next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we are on to the consent agenda.
Is there anything Council would like to remove this evening?
Council, is there anything we'd like to remove from the consent agenda? No? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ready for roll call? Roll call? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulock?
Yes.
And next, Mayor, you went over this on the 7th, but if you'd like to go over your mayoral appointments for the year, I believe?
Yes, I'm looking for those as we speak.
Let me assist here.
Fifty-five. It's in the middle here.
There we go.
Oh, oh, perfect. Thank, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. So the mayoral appointments are of the Historic Preservation Commission, the Environmental Commission, and the Library, Library Advisory Committee. I want to thank Kevin Hammeran for, again, being reappointed. Thank you very much. John Becker being reappointed, thank you very much, and congratulations. He was nominated as the Chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission, so congratulations, Mr. Becker. Steve Johnson and William Yogi Kurtz. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you very much for your service. I'd also like to thank both Gretchen Whitman and Kimberly Grundinall. I'm totally miss, miss saying her last name, but, and also like to thank our, our Library Advisory Committee, Anita Desatnick, Eileen Cassidy, George Katnies, Lorraine Walsh, and Elaine Brodsky. Thank you all very much for your service to the city of Cape May. Oh, is there more? Oh, how about that? Okay. And, and importantly, our Office of Emergency Management, Michael Eck, who is our Deputy Fire Chief, and he, under this proclamation, he's our OEM Coordinator and, again, Deputy Fire Chief. So, Mr. Eck, thank you very much for your service. And our Class II Planning Board Member, who is a member of the city staff, and happens to be our Deputy City Manager, Justin Riggs. Thank you, Justin. All right. Didn't mean to forget you. All right.
Mayor, moving on to your State of the City.
Oh, okay. Let's see. I'm gonna try this clicker while, while giving the very short State of the City Address. In all seriousness, it's about 10 minutes, just so everybody knows. I'm, I'm including another 10 minutes for applause and laughter, but, so, but, good afternoon, City Council, City Manager, clergy members, Judge Batten, Administration, our City Manager, Deputy City Manager, our clerk, and most importantly, my fellow citizens. It is an honor and a privilege to stand before you today to deliver my fifth State of the City Address. I must first express my gratitude to all of you, the wonderful citizens of the city of Cape May, who have entrusted me to be your mayor. It truly is an honor, and to have the opportunity to serve the community that I grew up in is truly a privilege, and I thank you. I want to thank my mother and my father, who happen to be here. Thank you. And I especially want to thank my wife, Justine. Thank you for everything you do. You're the only reason that I can stand up here, so thank you so much. Judge Batten, Mary Francis, I see Colleen Summers, Susan Tischler, I thank you so much for all of your help during campaigning and all those difficult times, but I really appreciate it. Mike, former Council Member, Mike Yeager, thank you for all your support over these years, and of course, my fellow councilmembers. I'm thrilled to report today that the state of our city is strong and vibrant. We can go through a couple of these slides to, to, to show that. As I reflect, as I reflect on the past four years, I'm struck by the progress that we've made together. When I first stood before you, I had a few more hairs, and the ones that I had were a little less gray. But despite that passage of time and the challenges that we've faced, one thing remains clear. We have one of the greatest communities and places to live in the entire country, and it deserves and needs our protection from the community and from your elected officials. Together as a community, we have accomplished so much over the past four years, and I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of those key milestones that have helped to find our time in office. And some of these, you know, were about four or five years now. But just to remember that these accomplishments are those of the community, not one council member, but of a united community working together toward a common goal. And you'll see some of those goals here. One of the proudest achievements of the last few years is the preservation of the Soul Track. There's a photograph, of course, of that area between the Atlantic Ocean, of course, and, and the Coast Guard Base. This is a hundred, and it's a hundred acres of, obviously, everyone knows pristine property. It's a testament to the power of preservation and perseverance and our commitment to working together for the environment for future generations. We've also taken steps toward a more sustainable city with a new, more fuel-efficient city vehicle fleet, solar panels on City Hall, and a variety of other green initiatives. These efforts earned us first place in the state for cities under 5,000 in population for sustainability, a recognition that we should all be very proud of. First place in the state, so it's pretty, pretty neat. Oh, there you go. Over the past four years, we have saved three buildings that were listed on New Jersey's Top 10 Most Endangered Sites: the Howe House, the Howe House that you see here, now the Harriet Tubman Museum, the Franklin Street School, now the Cape May Library, and the AME Church, soon to become a theater and community space, which are all shining examples of what happens when we work together as a community. I want to thank everyone involved in the library project, especially our partners in the county. If you haven't seen that building yet, make sure you get inside. It's absolutely stunning. While those are large preservation projects, we have taken also smaller steps to protect our historic structures, performing needed repairs on City Hall, such as the repointing of all the brick on the outside, adding HVAC to both the Firefighters Museum and the Colonial House just recently, and also taking on other important things like infrastructure. We've also completed important resiliency projects like the new electric substation, which might not be the most visually impressive and beautiful structure in the town, but especially during storm events like we've had in the last couple of days, to have that reliability and really resilience of, see of our electrical grid is, is huge. We've, everyone probably remembers, I think it was in like August of 19, when some of the town was down for three or four days in the middle of the summer. This, this certainly should fix that. Perhaps one of the less visual improvements that we've made is the restoration and enhancement of our infrastructure. Four years ago, two of those wells that you saw on the previous photo were down. Now all pumps are operational. We've added duplication to our water transmission line that allows us to make repairs on individual pumps in the event of a malfunction. We've replaced miles of roads and sidewalks, but more importantly, what's underneath of those roads: storm drains, water lines, sewer lines, and fire hydrants. We've also built miles of new sidewalks, making it safer for pedestrians. We've added crosswalks and repainted streets in cooperation with our Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, improving both, both pedestrian and cyclist's safety across our city, while also making biking more convenient, putting in over 100 new bike racks and a couple bike fix-it stations. At the same time, we've invested in spaces that bring us together, whether it's the new basketball court, or the ADA Accessible Playground at Quanis Club Park, the new restrooms or rehabilitating existing restrooms, including the new year-round restroom at Quanis Club Park and on the promenade. They're actually working on the promenade one today. Our children, our seniors, and our, and our visitors all benefit from these improvements. We've also made extensive enhancements at Soldiers and Sailors Park, a space to honor our veterans and war heroes. We've added a new ADA Accessible Beach Walk to provide access for everyone. The new beach walk allows residents and guests of all abilities to enjoy the natural beauty of our environment. This new amenity has allowed some who have not been able to enjoy the beach in many years to join their families in enjoying the beach that so many, so many of us love. Personally speaking, some of the letters and emails that I received in regards to this were very touching and heartwarming. This spring, we will be adding more mats to the beach walks to extend it further toward Madison Avenue. We will also be adding more stopping points for people, especially in wheelchairs, to use the sidewalk, to use the walk and be on the side of it while being able to join their families. Public safety, our Fire Department and Police Department continue to grow stronger. We've added more full-time firefighters, a full new squad of full-time police officers, ambulances, and fire apparatus, all of which will serve to protect our community for decades to come. Most importantly, with the vote of the people, we built a brand-new firehouse. That's not the brand-new one. Somebody else said I should have had somebody else do the clicker, but that's all right. Mostly on time and on budget. That building, along with these investments, is critical to maintaining the safety and well-being of all of our residents, which was, which, as we have seen recently with the unfortunate forest fires, is extremely important. Getting the lead-out was one of the first groups that we formed. And unfortunately, I think I forgot the, the slide for that. But I'm proud to report that the Get the Lead-Out Task Force, especially with the help of our Water Superintendent, Rob Kaminsky, has made tremendous progress. Since its formation, we have reduced known lead pipe in the city by 90%, well ahead of schedule. This is a crucial step in ensuring the health and safety of our residents, especially our children. And of course, these are pipes that are under the ground that would not be affected by the new desalinization plant. These are, these are utilities that need to be upgraded no matter what. Parking. I wanted to read something that someone published in the Star and Wave about parking. When the section of the jitney ordinance was introduced, was enforced, which provided that no more than one jitney park in a single block of the business section of Washington Street, the Star and Wave took the liberty to suggest that similar legislation be enacted regarding private cars. Nothing was done, however. I don't think the council was very active. And the result was that Washington Street remained as congested as ever. The street is just about, is just about sufficient width to accommodate four cars abreast. But when autos are parked on both sides of the street, this allows barely enough space for two cars to pass one another. With a condition like this, the slightest deviation causes a jam, and traffic is jammed several times every day with the accompanying loss of time and convenience. It is not necessary to prohibit cars from standing on the main street. All that needs to be done is to put a time limit on the parking privilege. This will prevent the streets from being lined on both sides of the street all the time and will cause less traffic jams. This was a comment from someone in the Star and Wave on August 9th, 1919. So, not much has changed in parking. I, so, but, which is pretty good, the Star and Wave from 1919. And I think it was Mr. Elwell who passed that along to me, kind of as a former mayor to mayor. It was kind of funny. Taking on one of Cape May's longest-standing challenges, we have created over 100 new parking spaces in downtown. The Welcome Center, Quanis Club Park, in front of Convention Hall, Lafayette Street, and other spaces here and there throughout the town makes a big impact. Financial strength. The key to our strength lies in our financial health. Four years ago, two of the three utilities, water and tourism, were operating at a deficit. Today, I'm proud to say that all three of our utilities, water, tourism- Today, I'm proud to say that all three of our utilities, water, tourism, and beach, are not only solvent, but they're thriving, and all of which, I think one has like a 1.5 million, but I'd like to say all of which have a multimillion-dollar surplus. This is a remarkable turnaround and a testament to the sound fiscal responsibility and commitment to our community's long-term sustainability. And a lot of our council members, and of course Kevin, our CFO, our city manager, owe a debt of gratitude for making sure that occurs. Our general operating fund surplus has seen a 225% increase, growing from 4.5 million to over 15 million. I understand it might be closer to 16 today. A truly impressive feat. Meanwhile, our debt ratio has decreased, allowing us to invest in more services, infrastructure, and projects that directly benefit our residents. Interest on investments increased from, I don't even want to say the percentage up there, but from $5,000 a year to over a million. We've managed to reduce our debt ratio while simultaneously expanding services. This hard work has allowed us to provide fair wages to our employees that they deserve. This balance of fiscal responsibility and growth positions us well for the future. Over the past five years, we have had zero tax increases, and now are preparing our sixth budget, which I am told by our city manager and our CFO, will include a sixth year at a 0% increase. We are the only municipality in New Jersey with a professional police and fire department that can make that claim. We continue to provide... (applause) Thank you. We continue to provide excellent services without burdening our residents and maintaining fiscal responsibility. Over the next several months, I want to just highlight a couple of the projects quickly. The Promenade Preservation Project is a city-received grant of $6.7 million. This is mainly for ADA accessibility and resiliency of our promenade. This grant money will be a major upgrade to our existing promenade that you will see starting this spring and next fall. This will be really repaving the whole promenade, really cleaning everything up, adding ADA accessibility, and of course, some resiliency portions of it. The Community Center. You asked and we listened. Within the next two months, we will be opening our new community center at the old library on Ocean Street. This will be a wonderful space for all of us to gather, commune, and play. The Nature Trails. We're thrilled to announce that by this summer, nearly two miles of walking trails will be open, winding through the marsh area behind Lafayette Street Park. This will provide a beautiful new space to enjoy peaceful walks, breathtaking sunsets, and the natural beauty of our environment. The picture on the right is just from a couple of days ago from our city manager and shows some of the pilings that are going in for the platform. What excites me most is the opportunity that this creates for our local schoolchildren. They'll have the chance to explore and experience the wonders of nature right in their own backyard, a truly special learning environment that will spark curiosity and deepen their connection with the world around them. Lafayette Street Park. I know Councilman Meyer can tell you that this has been quite a journey to get to this time, and how many years have you worked on it, Shane?
Well, 10 years on council, probably maybe three off-city council before that.
Yeah, so 13 total years. So my statement here is true. For over 10 years, we've been in permitting and litigation with multiple people, but including JCPL. And I want to thank the hard work of our solicitor for getting yet another major victory for our town. We have finally settled with JCPL, which means soon we can finally finish Lafayette Street Park. And I thank JCPL for working with the city for all of these years. I'm proud to announce that starting next week, work will begin on the dog park and the ball fields, truly improving this underutilized public space. This is a result of over 10 years of hard work, and I'm thrilled and thank you all for your hard work on getting this finally going. Our biggest goals moving forward will focus on securing the long-term future of our community and ensuring that we continue to be a city that thrives. The seawall, first and foremost, we must prioritize the protection of our shoreline. Without strong storm protection, not much else matters. The seawall project will be critical to ensuring our city can withstand increasing unpredictable weather patterns safeguarding our homes, businesses, and communities. As of today, we have DEP approval for the seawall. We are included in the FEMA funding for $25 million. This has been many years of work in the making, working with our county, state, and federal partners in the DEP, State Historic Preservation Office, and of course, the Army Corps. We look forward to this project beginning within the next two years. Clean water is essential to life. We have ensured that, we must ensure, that Cape May has reliable and sustainable water supply. Developing a water desalinization plant is one of our top priorities, addressing future needs while safeguarding both public health and our environment. Tonight, I have two major announcements regarding our water. One, I am announcing a partnership with Columbia University and their graduate program to study the hydrology of Cape Island. This is a fully funded study of hydrology, especially the desalinization plant and potential efficiencies regarding the treatment of our drinking water. This is a major partnership that will involve some of the leading minds on water and infrastructure that will help in better designing a state-of-the-art plant and our water system as a whole. How do we pay for it? Tonight, I am thrilled to announce that included within the bipartisan WADA bill, that's Water Resources Development Act, is $40 million set aside for the city of Cape May Desalinization Plant. This is a major benefit that will help Cape May Island, including, of course, the U.S. Coast Guard Training Center, West Cape May, Cape May Point, Lower Township, to enable us to have the cleanest drinking water for many years to come. The WADA bill was supported strongly by our representatives in Congress, Jeff Van Drew and Andy Kim as a congressman, and Senators Cory Booker and Andy Kim as our senator. Police Station. As our city grows, the need for a modern and efficient police station becomes even more critical. We are committed to providing our law enforcement officers with the resources and facilities that they need to protect our residents and ensure public safety for generations to come. We have made significant investment in new equipment like radios, body cameras, and many upgrades to our police vehicle fleet, but what's most important is that we provide our police with the finest facilities. Today, we have preliminary DEP approval for the land diversion that would allow for the construction of the police station on Lafayette Street Park. It also provides environmentally sensitive land adjacent to the Soul Track to be preserved in perpetuity. We hope that that will be finalized within the next three months. That's fine, thank you. Affordable housing is one of the most pressing issues that we face in the city. While Cape May is known for its beauty and charm, it has become increasingly difficult for our workers, our teachers, and our first responders and others to keep our city operating and be able to afford to live here. We must find ways to preserve our community's vibrancy by creating affordable housing that ensures Cape May remains a place where people want to live, work, and grow. Cape May's greatest asset is its community. It cannot be replicated. Most shore towns, as many of us know, become almost ghost towns, but that hasn't been the case in the city. What we all know, it's becoming more and more difficult for people to be able to afford to live here. We are working with the Housing Authority to use our COA fees to support the construction of 16 new affordable family homes. Unfortunately, the city does not control who gets to be in those units. Of course, we would like to have them for our police officers, for our firefighters, for people who work for the city and other businesses. The city must take serious action to create affordable housing, to illustrate the need. The first two affordable housing units that the city has done in recent history were completed last year. There were over 800 applications for those two units on Lafayette Street. This is something that needs to be done immediately while we still have a chance. It will not be easy, and it will not be cheap, but it's something necessary to protect our greatest asset, our community. We cannot be a community without the people who can afford to live and work here. As we look forward to the future, we remain committed to building on the progress that we've made, with a focus on the projects that will ensure Cape May's resiliency, sustainability, and continued prosperity. While the road ahead will have its challenges, we are well-equipped to meet them together. We are focused on fostering an environment where our community can thrive. That means attracting businesses, supporting local entrepreneurs, and improving our tourism offerings while maintaining the character of our city. Together, we will continue to make Cape May an even better place to live and to work. Moving forward together, in every accomplishment, in every challenge faced, and in every opportunity seized, we have demonstrated what is possible when we work together. The strength of Cape May lies in its people, people who care deeply about their city, who are willing to step up, volunteer, and give their time and energy. We are a city of great resilience, creativity, and heart. When we come together, whether it be to rebuild a historic site, support a local business, or protect our environment, we prove that Cape May is more than just a place on a map, it's a community that we call home. I thank you again, all, for the opportunity to serve as your mayor, and as always, I encourage you to continue to share your thoughts, ideas, and concerns with me and any of my colleagues here on City Council. I say to myself and to my fellow council members, our purpose is to listen, to lead with humility, and to work for the benefit of all. I ended the prior four State of the City Addresses, which were a little shorter than this one, with a proverb, which I'll repeat again today. "The way of a fool is right in his own eyes, but a wise man listens to advice." This is a reminder that no one has all the answers, but together, we have the wisdom, the strength, and the resolve to create a future that is bright for all of us. My door is always open, and together, we will continue to make Cape May a place that we all are proud to call home. God bless Cape May, and God bless America. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go right to the benediction. Father Dolan from Our Lady's Star of the Sea, if you could say a few words. Thank you very much, Father.
You're welcome. Good evening. Blessed are you, O Lord, our God, who have given us marvelous examples of charity and the great commandment of love for one another. Send down your blessings upon these, your servants, who serve our community and who generously devote themselves to helping others, especially here in our city of Cape May. When they are called on in times of need, let them faithfully serve you in their neighbor. Lord, send your light upon our mayor, our city manager, all the members of this council, and all the citizens of Cape May. May they continue to enjoy your favor and devote themselves to doing good. We make these prayers in your holy name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. With that, we'll move on to council comments. I'm not going to say anything. I think I said enough. Councilmember Meyer?
I'm just, I think everybody's doing a great job, and we're in a great place in this city, and we're only getting better. I just think it's really outstanding that you shared with us the $40 million that were approved by our United States government. I think we should all give ourselves a round of applause for that, because that's a lot of money. And it's a big project. And I'm thankful to work with such a great team in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Councilman Bodnar?
Look, nothing else tonight. I think I said everything I needed to say earlier, but thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Baldwin?
Congratulations, Deputy Mayor McDade and Mayor Mullock, and to you as well, Steve Bodnar, and welcome.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Just very briefly, it's an exciting time here in the city, and I am really thrilled to be part of this team. A lot of work, but we've got a great group of people, and I just see that even more will get accomplished in the next couple of years. Thank you.
The only thing I will say is thank you to all of you, and a lot of the work that you saw up there is because of your hard work. It's a part, a lot of it is the community, a lot of it is our city manager, solicitor, and our clerk, but I just thank you, and I appreciate working with each and every one of you, so thank you. With that, we'll open it up for a public portion. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please keep it under five minutes.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I noticed in the resolutions that we have four engineers. I thought with the hiring of Paul as an engineer with a salary, that we wouldn't be hiring all these additional engineers.
Do you want to comment on that, Paul?
Well, two of them are extension of existing project engineers. Colliers is obviously continuing to complete the design of the seawall, and CME is continuing the design of the desalinization plant. So they're tasked specifically for those two projects individually. The other two, DeBlasio Associates and Engineering Design Associates, they continue to work as project engineers on larger capital projects that, most of them are ongoing, like the Lafayette Street Park, some roadway projects we have, water and sewer infrastructure projects that we're applying for grants for, and continuing projects like that.
And what do you do as an engineer? Because that's what you were hired as, and your salary's through being an engineer, right? Because that goes to PERS and everything?
Overall, yes.
Okay, I didn't know, what projects are you working on as the city engineer?
Overseeing all of those projects and making sure everything's coordinated properly and effectively.
But isn't that usually what the city manager is without being an engineer?
No.
Okay, in the past, the city manager did that without being paid an engineering salary. My other question, move on.
Just to be clear on the salary, Paul probably makes a little less than other city managers as a total, whether it be engineer or the stipend as a city manager, than other city managers in town. And his expertise as an engineer definitely is helpful in any of those projects. He can keep those other engineers straight, and to be honest with you, I think that has saved the city some funds in making sure that those engineers are sharpening their pencils.
But correct me, isn't his salary, he was hired as a city engineer, and his second job, if it's a stipend, it becomes the city manager, correct?
That's true, yes.
Okay, so...
But it's not a stipend position. It's, I am both city manager and city engineer. It's not, one is not subservient to the other.
Well, I thought that your salary was under, as engineer, and then it becomes also, the smaller part is city manager, so that way, you know, your PERS can become the city manager or the city engineer, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dietrich's contract was updated to confirm that dual role and that he's getting a salary that represents those two roles.
Okay, so that all, so it all is contained underneath the PERS, then?
Correct.
Okay, whereas before it wasn't, so...
And really, that's to reflect the way that Paul has worked the past year. He started out as city engineer, and, you know, he's doing those, both of those roles. And not unlike the solicitor, that I don't do all the legal work. We farm some of that out tactically to specialists.
Right, but you're not on a salary either.
No, no, but it does point to...
So you're just by projects? We just pay you per project and per hours that you spend?
Right, but similarly, Paul is tactically deploying specific engineering services where it's appropriate to do so, roads, parks, and still has the expertise to guide those projects.
But we're also, you know, hiring an engineer to do that, too. So we're paying two engineers, basic is my point.
I find a lot of value in the city manager as being an engineer. He's taken the time and opportunity to explain some of the many complicated plans that the city has going on, and to do that with him, having him always available has been beneficial to me at least. to me at least, for the first time in recent years.
And I would add also that his ability to navigate through things like DEP, FEMA, some of the regulatory things, instrumental and floodplain management, you know, those were being parsed out or not being really attended to at the level that he's been able to do. So, there is, as it appears to you, that, you know, that we are hiring other people, but it would be challenging and difficult for the breadth of projects that are going on in this city, for him to be both an engineer and a city manager at the same time. There are other functions that are necessary to be able to run the city and run it effectively, so, I mean, I almost see it as, it's a split between the two, and it's his responsibility to balance the work products needed for both of them, so...
My other, I guess, comment has to do with the plans for Lafayette Street Park. I know we had talked about it before, and there were some changes made, but I see it was back on the plans, and that is, the bathrooms are the focal point of the park, and I thought we were gonna, it was said that you guys were gonna move it off to the side, so when you look at the park with the fields where the pickleball courts and everything is, you're not looking at a building that's a bathroom. And that was my only comment on that. I know, I'm not expecting to comment, I'm just saying that it would look better if, when you look at the park, you see the pickleball courts and the basketball courts and not a bathroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, if you want to respond to this, I just, I'm clarifying, I just want to make sure other people who are hearing this understand. The other engineers that we're hiring are on a professional services agreement, not hiring an internal engineer or something like that. I just want to make sure people understand that. Project-specific, we would pay those people based on projects. Hey, we're gonna do the road on Washington Street, who's the engineer on that, and we pay them to do that. Okay? Anyone else in the public? Seeing none? We can close public comment, and...
To adjourn the reorganization meeting.
Motion to, do I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Okay.
And we are right on time.
Perfect.
Unless council would like a recess for any reason, you want a few minutes, or...
We do have further business to attend to, but anyone who is here for the reorganization meeting, we appreciate you coming very much, and feel free to go grab some dinner. Father Dolan, thank you. Father Leonard, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Were you at the meeting for the property swap? I mean, Joe's had a few things to say. Were they all right, or were they...
Were you at the meeting for the property swap? I mean, Joe's had a few things to say. Were they all right, or were they...
We have a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025. The time is now 5 past 5:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the City website and City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that City Council meetings are audio-recorded and/or video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call, Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade.
Here.
Councilmember Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Mulick.
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz.
Here.
City Manager Dietrich.
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs.
Still here.
Deputy Clerk Turner.
Here.
Any additions or deletions tonight, council?
Any additions or deletions, council? Okay.
Okay.
Any updates, old business, city manager?
Thank you. So, got a little bit of an update. First, I just wanted to, I'd started the Quality of Life Group last year, and I just wanted to give you a brief summary on some of the things that we've kind of accomplished and geared towards. One of the first things that we wanted to do was have some directed police patrols for speed enforcement throughout the city, and just, you know, so I'm getting a monthly report on that, and just as a summary, they did 33 radar details, and they kind of split each squad up, and they kind of take a different street each week and kind of do a directed patrol. So they did 33 detailed radar details, they had 57 motor vehicle stops, they issued 12 tickets, two DWI arrests resulted in that, and 30 warnings, which I think the 30 warnings is the important part, especially as they get out there, is to put the word out there, and really, we just want compliance with speed and stuff like that. So that's just part of one of the aspects. Other things we've been meeting on is talking about, we've been working with in the Village Green section about some zoning issues and different things about how things have kind of gotten out of control, so we're having code enforcement and come out there and take a look at those issues, and we're gonna be addressing them as we move into the new year and sending notices. Also, there's been some houses throughout town that have some neglect to them, so we're looking at, you know, working with those property owners to try to encourage them to make the necessary repairs to keep their houses in proper repair. So, those are just a few of the items that we're looking at doing with the quality of life. One thing that's also spurred out of that is, I'm looking to reach out to all of our boards and commissions to develop, which I felt really worked out well with last year when we brought them all together to deal with the artificial turf ordinance. I think that it'd be appropriate to kind of meet with that group on a quarterly basis, to kind of have all the different boards meet, whether Planning Board, Zoning Board, Environmental, the Historical Commission, Environmental Commission, and Shade Tree, all to get together with a representative and discuss what issues they see and face, and then try to work up some proposals for council and city administration to work towards, you know, just improving the quality of life in Cape May City. So, we're looking to call that the LAD Work Group, the Land Use and Development Work Group, and I'm gonna be reaching out to all the board chairs in the first, you know, quarter, and try to set up quarterly meetings with those, kind of as a spin-off of our Quality of Life Group to improve the quality of life here in the city. The other thing I wanted to bring up, report on the recycling ordinance, the subcommittee did meet, I thought we had a very productive meeting and had a good draft, we distributed it to council. I know some council people still have some questions, so I'm gonna be trying to meet with all the council that has questions, see if we can come up with answers, and, you know, hopefully in February, come back with a draft that council can endorse, and we can move forward to, you know, change and modify our existing ordinance. And then the final update I had is, I sent them Municipal Public Access Plan. That's a plan that's required by the state of New Jersey to really document all the public access points that we have to the open public waters, the beaches and the back bays and our tidal creeks. Obviously, I don't think anybody can counter how much public access that we have and the availability of it. Unfortunately, there are towns in New Jersey that really limit and restrict and want to reduce the amount of public access points to the public waters. Cape May City is not one of those, but it's a plan that we have to put together in order that we have and receive a beach fill funding, and also to have our general permit to maintain the beach. So, this plan, as you see, is a draft. It's also being reviewed at the Planning Board, but I do want to, you know, make you aware of it, and it'll be coming back once the Planning Board adopts it and the DEP gets final approval of it. It will come back here for a final approval for your review, but I want council, if you did have any questions on it, let me know so we can address it, but I believe it's on the agenda for the next Planning Board meeting later this week or next week.
It's on for the 28th.
Yes, correct.
And that's all I had.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any updates from our city solicitor?
No updates, other than I just wanted to thank council for the opportunity to serve. This'll be my fifth year serving with you all as solicitor, and right before this meeting, I had a contract sitting here waiting for my signature for $1.9 million for funding for the nature trails, and I just wanted to express what a unique challenge, but also honored, is to do this and work with everybody, administration, the clerk, the managers, and council, and all the departments. I've gotten to work with all of you, and Steve, when you were volunteering, too, before you were a council member, and I'm just happy to be able to serve, and it's an honor, and look forward to seeing what everybody is going to be accomplishing the next few years as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. City Council, any old business or updates? No? Okay. All right. Carolyn Zabrowski, you're up to bat. We have the Washington Street Mall Business Improvement District Proposed 2025 Budget Presentation.
Yes. My name's Carolyn Zabrowski. As you know, I'm the treasurer of the Washington Street Management, Washington Street Mall Management Company Board of Trustees. We're a little late with our budget this year, so I apologize, but better late than never. I'm just gonna go through this spreadsheet, and then if you guys have any questions, I guess just hold them to the end, and I will answer them as best I can.
Thank you.
So, we are anticipating assessment revenue in 2025 of $71,038.26. We will also be collecting a special assessment for the security camera project throughout the city that will increase our revenue by $43,500. We currently are running a brick, a memorial brick program. We have so far received $193,933 of brick income, and we did have some surplus from 2024 of $10,000, which brings us to a total of $318,471.33. We are budgeting $10,000 for administrative and professional, $1,000 for memberships, $143,500 for mall enhancement projects. This is where the security camera special assessment will go before we pay it to the city towards the project. We are also looking into improvements for our bistro lights for this year. We've budgeted $55,000 for decor and maintenance. This is all of the seasonal flowers, decor, everything that we do along the mall. $16,000 towards installation and purchase of bricks, $7,000 for advertising, $13,000 for events, $8,000 for our website and social media management. We have $2,000 budgeted for uncollected assessments. Luckily, in 2024, we did have full participation, so hopefully we don't need that again. And $1,000 for miscellaneous, and we have set aside $61,971 towards future projects. And that's it.
What was number 61?
61,971.
I hope there's enough in here for the treasurer.
It is a volunteer position, but I am very happy to do it, seeing these numbers on the spreadsheet in front of me make me really happy. We've usually been working with about $70,000, so this is a great improvement to what we can do.
We really thank you, honestly. I mean, on behalf of the city, too, not just the bid, but we appreciate it. It's a lot of work for you to do voluntarily, so...
Thank you.
We could make a motion to add that to the budget, I think, but in all seriousness, thank you.
Of course.
So, your brick program has been very successful.
Very successful.
Okay.
Okay. And obviously, there is a limitation on space. Where do you think you are at, just as a percentage, or do you have an estimate?
I honestly don't have a, I don't manage the brick program, so I don't know. I would say we're a quarter to a half of the way through the brick.
Okay, somewhere between, yeah, around a third or something.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting there.
Yeah, that's, well, that's still good. That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you repeat which location the video surveillance was in?
It's, um, it's budgeted towards mall enhancement.
Well, I just appreciate that you all put that in there. I know it's a great partnership with the police, and, but we thank you for doing it.
Yeah, I think it will be beneficial for everyone.
I agree. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments, council?
I'll just make a comment. Callie does such a wonderful job.
Yeah.
And just taking a look at what the mall has done over the past couple of years with the music on the mall to, Toons Day Tuesdays. Little tongue twister. The decor, there's just so much that is just really a, a good asset to the city, to that district.
Yeah, thank you. We have a core group, and everyone really cares.
Yeah, it's beautiful when you walk down there, really. The decor is really nice, whoever your professionals are, they do a really good job.
Thank you.
And thank you for your, your volunteering on the bid and getting that done. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
So if council is prepared, we have Resolution 66-01 2025, a resolution introducing and approving the 2025 budget of the Washington Street Mall Business Improvement District in the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right, and this is slated to come back for public hearing and adoption on February 19th.
Great. Thank you.
Moving on to ordinances for introduction, we have 549-2025, ordinance amending Chapter 247 of the Cape May City Code regarding fire prevention bureau fees and regulations.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have 550-2025, ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Cape May City Code regarding reserved on-street handicap parking.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And 551-2025, an ordinance amending the city code to provide for control of plastic dust and contaminants.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I just.
Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know where, where this ordinance came from.
Well, basically, from, from me.
Okay, okay. No, I, I like it, I just didn't.
From, and, and in discussion with some of the members of the Environmental Commission, and, and it came up as a topic at the Sustainable Jersey.
I like it.
Yeah.
I, I think it's, it's good. It keeps work sites clean.
Yeah.
Of, you know, dust contaminants particles in the air.
Agreed. I would like to ask the city manager to see, to make sure that this gets updated onto the contractor checklist that is given out in the construction office, since, when it gets passed as an ordinance, so that it is on there as a reminder when the contractors come in, they're supposed to be getting those documents and acknowledging them, and this is a prime example of something that should get added on, so that they're aware of it each and every time. And as word gets out, I think that homeowners will also remind their contractors when they're on site.
And just to note, it's, I think, from a practical standpoint, relatively easy to comply with, you, you add a vacuum attachment to the saw, isn't that?
Or, or put a tarp down, honestly, Chris, either one of them, Mr. Gillen Schwartz, either one of them is sufficient to, you know, make sure that it's not sitting on the lawn or getting into the grass or the soil. And the other thing is, I would also suggest too, that maybe putting, I know there are a lot of signs down in the construction office and in that area, but putting something up effective when this ordinance is passed, you know, indicating, you know, new ordinance, be aware, you know, that this is something that the city would like compliance with, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, council, we have the public portion on the resolutions only.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on the resolutions this evening?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. My question has to do with Resolution 75, Resolution for the Transfer Appropriations Reserve for the 2024 Budget. In this resolution, it states NJSA 40A 4-58. That states that transfers happen the last two months of the year. We're not in the last two months of the year, we're in the first two, well, the first month of the year.
I apologize, but I do believe it also encompasses the first month of the new year.
Not according to what is in the ball.
Do you have this one? Okay.
Title 40A, municipalities and counties, Section 40A 4-58, appropriation transfers during the last two months of the fiscal year.
There you go.
And I think this is what we had an audit finding last year when we were doing this at the wrong time last year.
I don't mean, I don't mean to.
There's also Section NJSA 40A 4-59, which is appropriation transfers during the first three months of a succeeding year. So it might, it might just be the statutory reference, and that could be what the clerk was pointing to.
And that's fine, I just wasn't sure what, you know.
And it, it follows the same voting procedure, two thirds, you know, affirmative.
Two thirds, always is two thirds when it comes to the budget.
Yep. It would just be 59 instead of 58.
Okay, I'm happy.
Or 59. Okay, thank you.
My other question has to do with, uh, Resolution 67-01 2025, commenting on the fourth round presented and prospective need affordable housing obligations. I didn't see any numbers put in there for what is required from the state. It is my understanding from what is published, that the Round Four Perspective Need, DCA, October 18, 2024 report, it was 48, but the Round Four Perspective Need, NJILGA, proposed litigation drops it to 16. And I just think that's a good point to have, that, know where we stand with that.
Mr. Solicitor, do you have a comment on that?
It listed in the, one, two, three, four.
I believe it's in the resolution.
The fifth whereas.
Oh, I didn't see the.
It's in the fifth whereas, it says a present need rehabilitation obligation of 46, and a prospective need new construction obligation of 48.
It's on the first page. It's kind of buried among a bunch of.
But does it say about this, the 16? Does it say there 16?
Those are our numbers based on the, this new round.
48 and 16?
Yes.
Okay, you said it was 16 in that resolution?
It was, one, two, three, four.
You said 48 and 16.
The fifth whereas.
It says 48 and 16?
48, 46 and 48.
Well, according, that's what I'm saying, it's, they're not correct.
16.
I don't know what you're reading from, but I'm saying, I'm, I'm looking at the.
This is it. It's from the state's, what they put, what they put out.
Yeah, this, this resolution is from our Affordable Housing Council, Special Council, and the DCA numbers, the report for the fourth round, has a present need rehabilitation obligation of 46, and a prospective need of new construction obligation of 48. And those will be further subject to potential vacant land adjustment analysis, which we're going to be going through.
So that's not what I had stated then for the 16. The 16 is fourth round perspective need proposed litigation of 16. That's what they, they think they're going to be dropping it down to.
Yeah, well, that's, that may be a projection of where, where it may go from there, but like I said, these are the numbers, we, we just need to, all council is doing today is saying, this new system is the DCA releases numbers for the city and every other municipality in the state, and each town has to look at this and determine, can we make this work or not?
Right.
And this, this resolution is, yeah, I think we can make this work, and that's, those numbers may be subject to further adjustment through planning efforts and looking at things like a vacant land adjustment. And when they say litigation, that means going, in this context, going through this process. It's an administrative process, it's no longer in the court at the outset, they, the state has corralled everybody through this administrative process first, and that's, this is the first step in that, and then the numbers will be further evaluated through the mechanisms available.
I was just making it so people understand that they did readjust those numbers, and I was reading off the report that was given, that's all, that it was down to 16, what they assume with proposed litigation.
Yeah, and, look, I don't, I don't know, the numbers in the resolution are what the DCA released. We'll, we'll have to figure out what the final number will be after, I, I've seen that, thank you.
Okay, then.
We just have to go through the process and fi, figure out what the, the final number will be, but it's going to be, you know, based on these initial figures.
Okay. Why I say that is because the mayor in his speech commented on 16, and I thought that was really good, 16, but we also had the other two, so we actually had 18, if you're going to do 16, and the other two we already have, which would be over the requirement.
Those two would have been counted on our prior round, not in this future round.
I think it would be all included because it's after the numbers were both in.
Each rounds are separate.
This is a new.
Each round is separate. This is a new round. Those two were been for prior rounds.
When did the fourth round start?
It starts as, in 2025.
Okay. Thank you. My other question has to do with these resolutions talking about participation with Columbia, and also the other volunteer student with the lead for audit of the City of Cape May with water usage. If you could just elaborate it on what those two programs are going to be doing and how they interact, because when I see that they're going to look at water usage, I would think we already had those numbers, and that's why I was, you know, asking.
Mayor, if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
So those two resolutions were brought forth really to maintain compliance with our joint insurance fund. The mayor and the Environmental Commission brought forth the idea to involve some student interns with various organizations, so these two resolutions just make them as a part of the city, make us into compliance with the joint insurance fund.
I understand that. I'm asking, what are they actually going to do? You know what I'm saying? Because it really is like a little vague there, they're, they're going to look at water usage, well.
So the resolution itself does that action. The program with Columbia University is kind of more open-ended. We're going to be working with an advanced graduate course on a capstone project, so really, we have a meeting scheduled later this month to talk to the students. It's led by a professor at the graduate level, so we'll learn more about what those details really are. The second one is high school students, and in terms of a water audit, they'll come back to the Environmental Commission to talk more about the details of that. Basically, it's a survey that these two students are working on, that they will put together, that will then go onto our website, and it's a volunteer participation. It engages our youth, it engages council and the city as well.
Yeah, I was just looking for particulars on what they were doing. So I think that's all I have, and I just, you're going to change 7501 to 59. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on resolutions this evening? Seeing them will close public comment on resolutions. And on to the consent, is that where we're at, consent agenda, sorry? On to the consent agenda.
Yes, would we like, if it's necessary, to amend 75 to fix the statute?
From 58 to 59? Pardon me, do I have a motion to change the number from 58 to 59?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to amend to, roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Question, are the minutes, are they part of the consent agenda?
So this is just the motion to amend to fix number 75, so you're good.
So.
Just to amend it.
I know, I'm the new guy.
Nope, but you're right, we'll get to that in just a second.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
And Mayor Mullick?
Yes. I think we should motion on that resolution, on the amended resolution. Do I have a motion on the amended resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any questions on that? This is the motion on the amended resolution.
To adopt 75.
Yeah, on 75. Any questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
So now for the consent agenda, Councilmember Bodnar is correct that he should, if, if you're comfortable making a note for the record that you will be abstaining from the regular meeting minutes dated April 16, 2024, they were apparently written and never adopted, so that's just, this is just a maintenance adoption.
That was, that was my intent, that I was going to ask.
But you can absolutely vote on the rest of the consent agenda, we'll, we'll mark that for the minutes, okay? Is there anything else council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Anything, council?
Can I remove 5701 2025, please?
Absolutely.
5701. Okay. Anything else, council? Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion, mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
But for the, the minutes I abstain, on the others, I vote yes.
Perfect. Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. Do I have a motion on Resolution 5701 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
I just have a question because I'm, and I think this is for the solicitor, looking at this and looking at the current contract as far as the police and the extra duty, is there a conflict or is there consistency with that? Is that something that we need to be concerned about?
So the genesis of this is we, this, this council, I think, recently, the last few years, updated our extra duty ordinance, so that it provides the mechanism for event, people putting on events that need public services, specifically the police, to access that and provide fees so that the taxpayers aren't paying for those extra duty services. This was requested by the Police Department to help, those requests are there, and there are service providers out there that will coordinate that service, so it kind of takes it off the city's hands and frees them up to continue to do police work instead of doing administrative work, like following up on, hey, have they paid this deposit for these services that they're required to do? these services that they're required to do? And then the service for that, the service fee is supposed to be passed on also to the, the person receiving that service. So, it's not going to be, it's kind of like a service fee, like, like Park Mobile or something like that. It'll be passed on to whoever's using it, but it's going to free up the police to not have to do the administrative side of doing the extra duty work and allow them to focus, continue to focus on police work. So, this doesn't award a contract, but it'll put, it'll allow the QPA to go out and do a procurement and see what the best and most cost-effective solution for that will be for the city and if we want to pursue that. But that's where it came from, came from the police department, looking and seeing that other towns are entering into these types of agreements to have a vendor coordinate their extra duty services. It seems to be working in other towns, and they wanted to see if we could give it a shot.
Yeah, and that, it totally makes sense, but their current contract, it doesn't conflict with that at all, correct?
No, it would be, and, and the RFP is, is clear that it would be administered pursuant to the, the city code. So, so the process and the procedures that we have in place for that, that service will be provided under that umbrella. There won't, the, the contract won't be driving the bus on extra duty, the city code.
The city.
And we're not making any changes there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a, pardon me, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, council? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any and all things this evening, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Okay, we can close public comment. Onto new business. City Solicitor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City Manager?
I just would like to say, looking forward to a, a good positive year. I think we got a lot of things on our plate and a, a lot of good things to move forward, a lot of projects that I think will be really taking action. You know, I think the, the seawall, the police station building, a lot of road infrastructure, lead pipe removal, so there's going to be a lot of capital project work. We have a sidewalk rehabilitation program rolling out. Harborview Park could probably come towards the end of, you know, I'll say the fall, you know, so a lot of projects all going to be rolling out, as well as, you know, we've got the community center, I'll say, soft opened with some exercise programs, but, you know, looking forward to really, you know, hopefully by spring, and if we get the budgetary funds to get that up and really rolling, you know, so a lot of fun and exciting things for 2025.
Very good. Thank, thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Councilmembers, Councilmember Baldwin?
Just kind of following up on a conversation that the manager and I had as far as the engineering study for the beach slope. We're expecting that, and I know it's been delayed, I know we've been talking about it, but they had to compile a lot of information, transfer that data. So, what, we're looking at maybe another two months at.
March, I'm hoping to have something by March.
Yeah, there's, there was a lot of data. They ran into a lot of snags with doing that, but we were hoping to have it by, by the end of last year, but unfortunately, sometimes that's what happens. So, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bodnar?
Just want to mention on, so on Monday, this past Monday, at the Fisika State, they opened up their new winter exhibit, Roots of Black Travel. And I know, I know you were there, Mr. Mayor, you, you opened the exhibit. And, yeah, I want to mention that just because it touches on a chapter of Cape May history that had been neglected for a while, and the city is now educating people on and has become more in the public eye. I just want to mention it because, first off, it's a fantastic exhibit.
It is.
So, for those that are listening, I highly recommend that people go and see it. Well put together, very educational, and I think it goes until, until March or so. But I appreciate having the opportunity to see it, and they did a terrific job.
That's great. Thank you, Councilman Bodnar. Deputy Mayor McDade?
Just sort of following up on what the city manager said about the community center, it opened up two weeks ago with the first sort of exercise programs, and the women were very excited to be there. They're very happy to be in a new home. Dave and Rachel have done a great job. They'll be adding on some classes next week, so some additional classes. So, things are getting rolling, and there's a lot of energy. People are asking me about it, you know, utilization of it for book clubs and, you know, card games and things like that.